Start the webinar, please. Good morning and welcome to the Contracts, the Committee on Contracts. At this time, please place your phone on vibrate or on silent mode. If you want to submit testimony, send it to testimony@council.nyc.gov. Once again, that's testimony@council.nyc.gov. Thank you for your cooperation. Chair, we are ready to begin.
Good morning and welcome to the Mayor's Office of Contract Services Fiscal 2024 Preliminary Budget Hearing. My name is Julie Wan and I'm the Chair of Committee of Contracts. Mox's fiscal and budget totals, 32.7 million, including 18.8 million in personal services funding to support 206 full-time positions and nearly 14 million for other than personal services. This budget is 29.1 million less than the fiscal 2023 adopted budget. Mox's preliminary budget includes a vacancy reduction plan that would reduce Mox's budget headcount by over 35 full-time positions. At today's hearing, the committee will examine Mox's fiscal 2024 preliminary budget and how it prioritizes resources to optimize existing operations and transforming processes to make it easier to do business with the city. Our set of questions will include but not limited to Mox's headcount and how its vacancies will impact operations, how the city plans to address critical delays in registration and late payments. We will deep dive on questions related to health and human services and lastly, we'll follow up on costs associated with the influx of asylum seekers. The city's fiscal 2023 proposed budget added $24 billion for contractual services. 1% of citywide contract budget of about 310 million allocated to the minority and women-owned business enterprises, also known as MWBEs. We look forward to hearing from Lisa Flores, the city's Chief Procurement Officer and Director of Mayor's Office of Contract Services, on how agencies plan to achieve the mayor's blueprint on awarding $25 billion in contracts to MWBEs by 2026 and $60 billion by 2030. I also want to make sure that we thank our committee staff for their work, Principal Financial Analyst Florentine Kabor, Unit Head Aliya Ali, Committee Counsel Alex Polenoff, and our Policy Analyst Alex Yablon. I would also like to recognize my colleagues who have joined me today, Councilmember Ariola and Councilmember Velasquez Online. And I would like to welcome the city's Chief Procurement Officer and the Director of Mox. Before we hear from you, the Committee Counsel will swear you in.
Good morning, Alex Polenoff, Committee Counsel. Would all members of the administration testifying today, please raise your right hands? Do you swear or affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony today and to respond honestly to council member questions? Thank you. You may begin when ready.
Good morning, Chair Wan and members of the Contracts Committee. Thank you for inviting us to testify at this year's preliminary budget hearing. The Mayor's Office of Contract Services has made great strides in the past year to advance many of the key initiatives I laid out for you last year. And we're happy for the opportunity to update the committee on this progress. This administration has made it a high priority to reform procurement. We recognize that the issues plaguing the city's procurement process, such as slow payments, late contract registration, and administrative complexity have existed for many years and require a concerted citywide effort to address them. Across multiple work streams and approaches for tackling these problems, Mox has been charged with spearheading this effort to make the city a better business partner. In addition to Mox's traditional roles in oversight, leading this reform work involves key initiatives in several buckets: digitizing through the Procurement and Sourcing Solutions Portal of Passport, reforming rules and regulations, nonprofit and capital reform, maximizing MWBE utilization, and enhanced community engagement. Before sharing some of the important work that Mox has carried out over the past year to fulfill these initiatives, I want to provide an overarching view in the city's procurement landscape. In FY22, mayoral agencies inclusive of New York City Public Schools awarded nearly $38 billion in city contracts for the goods, services, and construction necessary to fulfill their respective missions. This was a 25% increase over the previous year in which the city awarded $30 billion in contracts. In FY22, Human Services accounted for $20.3 billion or over 50% of this total, up from $12 billion in FY21, highlighting the importance of procurement to the delivery of human services, with the largest agencies in this category being New York City Public Schools, Department for Homeless Services, and Department of Health and Mental Hygiene. A big part of the reform work, as we've shared previously, is our leadership role with the Joint Task Force to Get Nonprofits Paid on Time, which is a combined initiative between the mayor and the controller from the transition period aimed at improving the city's rate of on-time contract registration for nonprofits. This initiative kicked off with a resounding success through the Clear the Backlog Initiative, which led to over $4.2 billion cleared through a 12-week sprint, freeing up cash flow for around 460 organizations. As of now, the city has cleared over $6.2 billion of the $7 billion originally targeted in the backlog initiative and is making steady progress on closing the remaining contracts out. Through the backlog initiative, we identified common pain points to guide more foundational reform work, which involves peeling back many layers of problems that have built up over years. This has already led to the addition of an allowance clause to human service contracts, which will enable agencies to process anticipated budgetary increases without revisiting the entire procurement process for an amendment. Through this new allowance clause, budgetary changes such as the FY23 $68 million workforce enhancement funding are being added more quickly and efficiently to applicable human service contracts. Another area we are focused on is the City Council discretionary process, which allocates funding to providers well after the start date of the fiscal year, when they are already expected to begin services. This means agencies must go through the procurement process in tandem with providers fulfilling their contractual obligations, a guaranteed recipe for late payments in a high-volume contracting portfolio. Fortunately, we have found a willing partner in the council to review and revise this process, and we're continuing to assess new solutions for reforming this process and look forward to being able to share out results as we get further along. Beyond this area of nonprofit contracting reform, we're also looking at areas such as vendor integrity reviews, a contract stat review of agency performance, and more passport system enhancements to further advance the work of the task force. Mox has also played a leading role in the New York City Capital Process Reform Task Force, which brought together a range of key stakeholders across the city to devise recommendations to improve the city's capital project delivery process with the goal of reducing timelines, saving taxpayer dollars, enhancing participation, and improving the city's ability to respond to emerging needs. The recommendations developed by this task force span many facets of the process, with a number focused on procurement, such as increasing the availability of alternative delivery tools, implementing full-scale electronic bidding statewide, revising the city's approach to public hearings, and modernizing various outdated policies and procedures. We've already made progress on one such policy, the Financial Control Board, which agreed to increase its review threshold fivefold, thus reducing unnecessary bureaucracy on hundreds of contracts that go through the process. In this case and others, a win for one sector of procurement often cascades into others as this change has allowed us to reduce process requirements on hundreds of contracts annually. The city is currently advocating up in Albany for the passage of a legislative package formulated out of these recommendations and look forward to sharing out the results from this session. Along with reforming the rules that underlay our digital procurement system, we are also continuing to enhance and expand upon the functionality available in Passport itself. At a high level, our major releases have involved Release 1 in 2017, which were vendor disclosures and responsibility determinations; Release 2 in 2019 for contracts of goods purchasing and catalogs; Release 3 in 2020, end-to-end procurement from sourcing to registration; and Release 4 in 2021, including financials and invoicing pilot. Up next, we are implementing a platform upgrade and expanded functionality for human services, financials, and reporting. These efforts will further consolidate, centralize, and standardize city procurement in our one digital platform. We're fully aware that change can come with an adjustment period and we're planning proactive change management, training, communications, and other approaches to support adoption of new pieces of functionality. If the committee members encounter any providers who are experiencing difficulty with this change, please feel free to refer them to myself, my colleagues in attendance with me today, or the Mox Service Desk. Help is always available for those who need it while navigating the New York City procurement process. While change can be difficult, we know from experience that citywide standardization and centralization can pay enormous dividends in the long run. HHS Accelerator provided the blueprint for this. The implementation of this legacy system allowed for the city to gain, then, unprecedented transparency and performance management tools to understand agencies' progress in moving contracts forward. Passport has taken this model and expanded on it citywide, with the results to show for it so far. Based on publicly available data on Passport Public Beta, a reporting feature built to aggregate and publish the wealth of data in Passport, we can report that over 25,000 vendors have completed all the necessary paperwork filings to be ready to compete for business. Nearly 22,000 contract actions have been registered in system in less than three years, with another 7,000 in progress. Importantly, we've had over 400 vendors in 2021 and 2022, each who submitted a response to a solicitation that had never previously had a contract with the city. In effect, this measures the level of competition for city opportunities, ensuring that we're getting widespread participation, a diverse array of offers related to our needs, and ultimately, lower costs. In the human services sector, solicitations for human services have averaged about 20 responses per solicitation, which is a high level of competitiveness that we hope to continue improving. We're also focused on functionality to enhance transparency through a data warehouse and delivering on the document vault feature in Passport that has been highlighted throughout our reform work as a priority for the human services sector. Data for city procurement rests in multiple systems. While Passport is the entry point to doing business with the city, financial transactions are logged in FMS. The controller has their own system. Subcontractors must go through the Paye Information Portal and several agencies use unique systems of their own. Passport delivers on the need to centralize and standardize the work of procurement, but reporting on all of these diverse systems in a centralized coherent way is the mission of our data warehouse. We had previously shared information with this committee on the costs related to our agreement with Ivalua as a software provider for Passport, along with our subcontract agreement with Accenture to support systems integration, maintenance work, and other technical support for implementation services. In total, we've contracted for roughly $84 million over 10 years with Ivalua from FY16 to FY26, and our associated subcontract with Accenture for implementation services has been valued at $16.4 million over three years. We're currently working through an additional change order for approximately $3.9 million for Ivalua and $9.3 million for Accenture, which will deliver on key functionality identified through the Joint Task Force to support nonprofit contracting, expand our reporting capacity, and implement a document vault. In terms of the workload that this system was designed to manage, the city's overall procurement portfolio, our expenditures on Passport are a drop in the bucket. Annualizing the cost of Passport to $10 million per year over the FY16 to FY26 contract term, Passport represents less than a tenth of 1% of total citywide contract award value each fiscal year, and transaction costs of less than one cent per contract action and vendor filing in system. It's reasonable to make this level of investment in a process so critical to the city operations, and we're happy to follow up with additional details as we have in the past. While our teams lead procurement reform in the human services and other sectors, we're also responsible for carrying out day-to-day work that pushes contracts forward. Mox was responsible for approving over 1,200 HHS pre-qualification list applications in FY22, a required step for being able to compete for many human service RFPs and to receive City Council discretionary funding. We also processed a procedural clearance of nearly 10,000 discretionary awards to facilitate the contracting process in Passport. Our teams also support the MWBE program in partnership with our colleagues at the Office of MWBE and Department of Small Business Services. In FY22, the city achieved its highest award total to MWBEs under Local Law 1 in history at nearly $1.4 billion, while also surpassing the one NYC goal established under the prior administration three years ahead of schedule. Through Quarter 2 of FY23, the city is currently at 25.8 utilization of MWBEs on Local Law 1 eligible contracts, and with the recent appointment of Chief Business Diversity Officer Michael Gardner in February, we are collectively laser-focused on improving outcomes. To this end, we successfully advocated for legislation to raise a threshold of MWBE non-competitive small purchases from 500,000 up to 1 million in the previous state legislative session and completed policy and technical requirements to ensure that agencies were able to expeditiously utilize this increased threshold. In FY22, agencies used this method to procure over $110 million worth of goods and services, nearly 50% higher than the prior year, demonstrating the increased uptake of this method as we raise a threshold. And we are currently advocating to increase this threshold to 1.5 million to align with other governmental bodies in New York State. We've also continued to enhance digital tools that facilitate the procurement process. Passport Public shows that over 6,000 city-certified MWBEs have completed the process requirements to be ready to bid on contract opportunities, while agencies have issued nearly 2,000 requests for information to complete MWBE non-competitive small purchases since 2020. We continue to review opportunities to further enhance the system to meet the needs of MWBEs and will gladly keep the council apprised of our progress. While both the MWBE program and all citywide contracting, Mox serves a key role as a steward of the city's procurement data to provide transparency and accessibility into expenditure of taxpayer dollars. Mox publishes nearly 100 legally required reports in total each year, spanning from legally required MWBE reporting each quarter to more discreet reports such as the purchasing of environmentally preferable goods at city contracts. In addition to required reporting, Mox conducts much of the data analysis and informs policy and program decisions, such as assessing the impact of potential reforms through the various task forces, projecting the impact of policy changes such as changing the public hearing requirements, and providing ongoing performance management reporting. With multiple systems in place across the city for procurement-related work that have been devised over many years, it is important work to connect all of this data coherently and tell a clear story to city leadership, external stakeholders, and to the public. This is why it's imperative that we continue our work on the procurement data warehouse, as I outlined earlier, which will centralize and integrate the data from disparate systems, leading to better standardization, accessibility, and ease of use for the consumption of city procurement data and advancement of mayoral initiatives. Data scientists are a notoriously difficult group of professionals to recruit, even in the best of hiring environments. And as such, we place tremendous value in the key staffers at Mox who have carried this workload and put us in a better position going forward. Mox has a new enhanced approach to facilitate learning the systems, rules, and policies that guide New York City procurement. Our learning and development team have published dozens of resources which are available to vendors and city staff, and we are currently doubling down on engagement by putting an emphasis on meeting vendors where they are. We have made our learning services available at numerous public events, including the recent SBS Procurement Fair and Bronx MWBE Borough Forum, and put together simplified resources that will help vendors who are just starting out. Furthermore, we launched a new initiative, Mox in Your Neighborhood, a series of in-person workshops where we bring Passport know-how to locations in every borough and assist vendors with any questions they may have. This led to a 73% conversion rate for vendors to complete the filing process at our initial sessions, which we hope to continue expanding. Our teams have also recently launched several training programs, including the relaunch of the Procurement Training Institute, which has delivered to 653 agency users, and a monthly webinar series for vendors on getting started contracting with the city that has had over 2,000 vendor attendees since August, with more to come for the rest of the year. Targeted communication has also led to tangible results with a recent Passport Information Blast reaching nearly 12,000 individuals and leading to over 150 organizations to take action in Passport to set up their account. Our Service Desk also provides best-in-class support to vendors and agency users who have questions on Passport, the procurement process, or anything related to city contracting. Our Service Desk has made it a high priority to bring down our average time to respond and reduce the ticket backlog to ensure that we are providing a high level of service and responsiveness to vendors who rely on our systems and policies. Our team has achieved a 62% reduction in the average time to respond between February of this year and last. This high level of responsiveness will position us well for the major Passport releases ahead. Mox is also involved in a host of issues and initiatives that do not typically command attention when discussing city procurement but are nonetheless important to the delivery of government services and construction. For example, we're part of the Local Law 97 Contracting Working Group with DCAST and the Law Department, which focuses on providing early procurement advice, support, and troubleshooting to assist DCAST in expanding their universe of contracts and tools to achieve the citywide climate goals of reducing building-based carbon emissions by 40% by 2020, 30% and 80% by 2050 on approximately 60,000 residential and commercial buildings in New York City. Mox provides procurement, legal, and technical reviews for various priority projects, including solar construction, technical service contracts for energy audits, and retrocommissioning, general studies, commissioning distributed energy feasibility studies, cost estimation, operations and maintenance, and building controls. Mox also leads the Franchise and Concessions Review Committee for the city's nearly 500 operating franchises and concessions that generated over $200 million in revenue in total in FY22. For just one more example among many, we have also partnered with HPD and the Chief Performance Officer to pilot a new approach to procurement known as Result-Driven Contracting, which is a set of strategies designed to help government use procurement and contracting to achieve better outcomes for residents, businesses, and community stakeholders. This pilot is still in the early stages, but we are looking forward to evaluating the results. Like many city agencies, Mox has experienced some difficulty with attrition and hiring. Our current budgeted headcount of 209 with 32 vacancies currently open. We had 33 vacancies reduced as part of the vacancy reduction plan, and our headcount has remained stable at 177, slightly up from 168 in FY22. As many of our vacancies sit in the technology-related areas, we have challenges with hiring for these positions. However, we have encouraged to see the mayor, OMB, and DCAST take an active approach to improving the citywide hiring climate and believe several of the ideas discussed publicly would allow us to have more flexibility and tools at our disposal to recruit and retain top-notch talent. Mox has also taken an aggressive approach to implementing new initiatives that will support our hiring. This includes having a presence at jobs fairs through DCAST and universities, sharing our positions via distribution lists and social media, and embracing emerging talent through programs like Ladders for Leaders, Summer Youth Employment Program, the Mayor's Office's Legal Fellowship, Civil Service Pathways Fellowship, City Service Core Fellowship, the Vista Program, and partnering with City Tech, the College of Technology, and the QD System. We've also implemented an internal DEI review as part of our hiring process to ensure we're developing a diverse and inclusive workforce. Taken together, these actions position us for recruiting success in the future as hiring conditions improve. In closing, I want to thank the chair for a productive partnership in our first year in our respective seats. We both know there is much more work across so many areas, expanding on the wins we have already secured through Passport, fixing underlying rules and processes to streamline the procurement process, implementing task force reforms to make sure nonprofits get paid on time, and capital projects are delivered at a faster rate, and instilling equity through the procurement process. I look forward to continuing our dialogue on these issues and partnering with the council to get stuff done for the city. I'm joined by our Acting Chief Technology Officer, Don Sutterlin, and Deputy Chief of Staff, Matt Sullivan, and we are happy to take any questions that you have.
Thank you so much. So we'll just dive right in. What are the budget priorities for this upcoming fiscal year for Mox?
Thank you for the question. As outlining in the testimony, we'd really put into the five buckets of continuing the digitization of procurement through Passport and having that as, you know, full adoption. Reforming rules and regulations, which I mentioned in my testimony, is really at a level unprecedented in many years of the focus across all the city agencies and directly from City Hall on really digging into those reforms. The work through the nonprofit and capital task forces, continuing to maximize MWBE participation and really improving and building on our community engagement.
That's, everything looks good and that's a lot. For fiscal year 2024 preliminary budget, it includes a baseline new need of 1 million in the budget. What is the new need entailed for? Because I assume all of these things will cost more than a million.
Thank you for the question, Chair. This was not necessarily a new need, but a PS to OTPS transfer to fund a future quality assurance project at Mox that is currently in the procurement phase.
Got it. Thank you. Have you asked for additional needs from OMB but did not receive funding in this budget?
We have been in communication with OMB and talking about what are the priorities of the administration and continue to have conversation with them about needs going into the future and look forward to that partnership.
Are there specific things that you were advocating for that you have not had a definitive answer in response from OMB?
We're continuing to work with OMB as all the agencies are and really looking at our current budget and looking at what is in our plan for Passport, for example, and our staffing needs and have productive conversations with OMB.
Could you provide a status update on Passport? Are you on time with the timeline that you had laid out for this fiscal year for the changes and reforms on the fiscal years to come?
Thank you for the question. We, as I mentioned in my testimony, went through sort of a prioritization process, even from the last time that we spoke, Chair, at the last budget hearing and ensuring that we were responding to the outcomes and output from the task forces. And so I would say at this time, we're still on schedule and we hope to stay on schedule now that we've sort of re-done that reprioritization.
Okay, and what is the current spending for the Ivalua contract and all of the other contracts that exist for Passport for this fiscal year?
It's still pretty much the same as we shared last year, which is about $84 million for Ivalua over 10 years and $16 million for Accenture over three years, noting that we do have the change order pending, which would be another roughly four for Ivalua and roughly nine for Accenture to do some of the work that the director mentioned in testimony, such as document vault.
So how much has been spent so far for this fiscal year?
Oh, spend today on the fiscal year.
For Ivalua and Accenture?
But we can follow up, yeah.
Okay, we would like that breakdown.
Okay.
Do you see any additional costs being added for Passport and Accenture?
So I'll start, Chair. And taking a step back, that Passport, as you know, is the city's, for the mayoral agencies, the city's system of record for procurement. And so similar to the city's system of record for financial data, FMS, it's really important that we continue to invest in that system. And so, you know, as you probably know, there are a number of systems in the city of New York that if you don't invest in them, become legacy systems that don't operate as intended or that become more costly to fix if you're not maintaining it throughout the years. And so at this time, what we've laid out in terms of our immediate prioritization of projects and additional functionality is, as mentioned in my testimony, but we're going to continue to maintain the system and ensure that it operates at the highest level possible.
Got it. Are there any changes to the agencies that are adopting Passport from when we last spoke about Passport? Do we have any new additional agencies that are going to be adopting it?
Oh, I understand the question. Thank you, Chair. We are still working on, again, full adoption of the current agencies and I think that's part of our partnership with our agencies and continuing to build functionality and respond to their needs. And so we are really working on making sure, as I said in the testimony, for example, I think last time we were here and at the beginning of the process for the Joint Task Force, one of the things we heard loud and clear was that everyone wanted document vault. That functionality was built into Accelerator over 10 years ago, but it was not built into Passport. And so again, sort of in line with our prioritization and responding to agencies' needs, that's something that's on our timeline as a priority for this administration. And so we're really focusing our efforts on making sure that we're providing all the functionality to agencies that are currently in the system. However, we have a very good relationship with New York City Public Schools and, you know, hope to continue working with them and potentially have more of their contracts in the future as they also go through their process of standardization in their workflow.
Thank you. I also applaud you for all of the progress that you're making for clearing the backlog. What concerns me is the 2024 preliminary budget totals, 32.7 million, and it's $29.1 million less than the fiscal 2023 adopted budget. Can you explain the significant decrease in the 29 million?
I can start just, yeah, a lot of that is one-time funding for, we kind of have subscription costs and then the major releases. So we had more- So we had more major release funding in FY twenty-three, some of which will likely roll over into FY twenty-four uh, for some of the work that was discussed in testimony, but, um, that, that's the main difference, yeah.
Can you break that down? So out of the twenty-nine point one million that is less, how, what subscriptions are you talking about? How much are the s- subscriptions? How many subscriptions are we talking about that it could amount to twenty-nine point one million in difference?
Well, it's still the, the IVALUA subscription is the kind of baseline, but the, the, there was thirteen point, point, thirteen million in FY twenty-three related to some of the work that we described, and, uh, I don't know if you want to add anything else. Uh, we can share more information.
Okay, so thirteen point one million, that still leaves a significant amount from the twenty-nine point one million cut.
Yeah, I think the remainder was the, uh, the platform upgrade and a couple of other pieces of functionality that were put into FY twenty-three, but, uh, they're not carried over into FY twenty-four, but we can certainly look more closely and share with your office.
Okay, so if I understand you correctly, the twenty-nine point one million decrease is not going to impact Mox's ability to operate and continue to reform contracts because you're saying that it was for subscriptions that no longer are needed?
Just, just to clarify, the investment, uh, was not intended to be a baseline investment in the out years, um, it, for functionality that, uh, we had requested in Passport, um, and as I, I mentioned in the testimony, uh, tho- those funds, we're still using those funds that were allocated, um, we're after we've done our reprioritization of, of really where, where we want to put that money in terms of, uh, Passport functionality, um, but it wasn't intended to be, uh, uh, ongoing, uh, uh, baseline amount. The, and just, just to clarify in terms of subscription, uh, to support the system, uh, we don't have multiple subscriptions, the baseline, uh, uh, cost of the subscription for the IVALUA software for Passport.
So you're, you don't need to renew those subscriptions at all?
We're still under contract with IVALUA and Accenture, and, and so there is no change to that, uh, to those contracts in terms of subscription services in order to maintain the current system.
Okay, so it was a bulk payment up?
We haven't made any bulk payments, we've haven't, uh, there, there's no upfront payment, it's a, uh, standard contract. And so payments are made, uh, after work is received and invoices are reviewed. Um, and so the investment in terms of the, the last budget cycle, uh, again, we, we have reprioritized how we're going to use those funds in terms of Passport functionality, but there, there is no upfront cost, uh, or payments that are made to any of our contractors.
Okay, so there should be no impact from the twenty-nine point one million dollars that is being cut for Mox and for Passport to continue to be reformed, is what I'm hearing.
The thirteen million dollar investment in terms of Passport that was allocated last fiscal year, uh, we, we still intend to use that thirteen million dollars for functionality that now has been reprioritized as outlined in, in my testimony.
Okay. What is the interest that he funding for five point one million dollars cover?
Uh, yeah, these are, this is for personnel spend, uh, related to HHS Accelerator staffing, the, some, uh, lines at Ops that are hosted at Mox, and then, um, additional lines at Mox.
And the preliminary plan includes a one-time funding of two point four million in fiscal twenty-three for American Rescue Plan. What does this budget entail?
Uh, this funding was related to three deliverables from Mox's contract with IVALUA for Passport that were at the time deemed eligible for, uh, that federal funding.
Do you anticipate additional funding for this budget line item? If so, how much?
Not at this time, but we can definitely follow up, Chair.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to Councilmember Ariola, who also has questions.
Thank you, Chair. And thank you for your testimony. So, um, I'm interested to know, for nearly a decade, the city has required bidders participate in state-registered apprenticeship programs for contracts that exceeded three million or a project that equals or exceeds five million dollars. And a contract on a project exceeds two million dollars. Uh, does, is, does Mox believe that all New York City agencies must comply with the city's apprenticeship requirement?
Thank you for the question. We work closely with our agencies, uh, to ensure that any, uh, obligation or any legal requirement is adhered to. Um, a- as, as I'm sure you know, uh, you know, the requirements, um, in some cases, uh, do require some analysis with, with the agency to sort of align with the scope of services. Uh, but of course, it's, it's important for, uh, our office to make sure that any legal requirement is adhered to, including the apprenticeship program.
Okay, and would you know that the number of projects where Mox issued a waiver for any of the city's agencies for apprenticeship?
Thank you for the question. I don't have that number, um, right with me at this moment. I, I will say, um, it will, it will be a fairly small, uh, number. Um, those are, uh, not, not typical, um, but I don't have the number in front of me, so I definitely can ensure that we follow up with that, with that number.
That'd be great. And if there was a, a waiver, what would the criteria be?
Thank you for the question. So considering sort of the, uh, legal parameters from, uh, state law, uh, which we, uh, at, at Mox, um, are entrusted to ensuring that agencies adhere to, um, it kind of depends on the scope, the title, and, uh, uh, the program um, as outlined and approved by Department of Labor, and so it's very, uh, fact-specific. Um, but I'm, I'm happy to, uh, do a follow-up, that there are specific issues or concerns that you have.
There definitely is, because, um, the DOT actually recently removed the apprenticeship requirement from line striping contracts for the five boroughs, and these, uh, two contracts totaled, uh, thirty-one million in, uh, dollars in work. So that is not an agency that would not have to comply with the apprenticeship requirement, right? Because of the amount of, well, the agency itself and the amount of the project.
Thank you for the question, and I think as you outlined in, in, uh, at, at the top of your, at your question, there, there are certain dollar values and, and parameters where there's a, the determination of if, whether or not apprenticeship may apply, and then the, it's, uh, fact-specific to the particular contract titles and program, um, availability and approval by the Department of Labor. Um, I think last fiscal year, we had over two billion dollars worth of construction that was, uh, subject to the apprenticeship program, and as you know, that the administration is advocating, uh, on multiple fronts for, um, expanding, um, different types of programs that, that really, uh, get to the same spirit of, as the apprenticeship program. And so, uh, again, I, I definitely would love to be able to follow up with you, um, and the specifics of that particular DOT contract.
Definitely need, because I have a few more questions, but I think it does need specific answers that perhaps you're not equipped for today, but I think it's an issue that's, that is quite large, and it affects a lot of people, and it affects, um, prevailing wage, and it, and it also affects having skilled labor on jobs that are of, you know.
Absolutely, Councilmember, and, and I think this administration one hundred percent agrees with the spirit and sentiment, and, and as, as I mentioned earlier, um, has since last year rolled out numerous programs and initiatives that may, while may not be apprenticeship program, is the same spirit of en- ensuring that we are investing in, uh, our residents and creating specific pathways for New Yorkers to, um, benefit from the contracting process and actually, uh, work in their neighborhoods and work for contractors that are under contract with the city of New York. So a hundred percent, this is, uh, an important issue for the administration, and I apologize, I don't have all the details of that DOT contract here, but I promise you that we can, uh, come to your office and do a call, uh, this week or next week and, and dig into the details with you.
Appreciate that, Director, very much. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Ariola. I know that my office has also been tou- has been in touch with Mox for this issue, for the unions who are very concerned about this. We are also following up with the State Controller about this issue, because it seems that New York City DOT removed apprenticeships requirements from line striping contracts for the five boroughs, and these two contracts combined totaled over thirty-one million dollars of work, and the Mox apprenticeship requirements mandate that DOT receives a written waiver seeking to not apply the city's apprenticeship requirements. Do you know if New York City DOT received a waiver from Mox for this? Because we had asked, and I don't think we got a clear answer.
Uh, thank you for the, a follow-up question, Chair, um, and acknowledging, I do, I do believe, uh, the, the staff had a, a meeting with you or your staff and, uh, the same, uh, uh, number of questions. Um, and so I don't, again, I don't have the specifics in front of me at this time, and I, I believe that the contract and question may still be open. Um, so I, I definitely will, uh, follow up with you afterwards, and again, I'm happy to, to do that, uh, follow-up meeting with, with both, uh, Councilmember and, and yourself, Chair, um, to follow up in the last conversation, uh, both with, uh, my Deputy Chief of Staff and, and our legal team, and, um, and, and make sure that we're, we're, uh, being fulsome in our answers to your questions.
Thank you, because we know that both the cities, the Mayor, the Controller's Office, and the State Department of Labor post a prevailing wage rate for the line strippers and the apprenticeships, so we will definitely be following up. Um, I'm gonna go back to delays in contracts registration and payments. In fiscal year twenty-two, or three-quarters of cities' contracts with nonprofit organizations were registered late. Can you give us a sta- status update on registrations for fiscal year twenty-three?
Uh, thank you for the question, um, and just to, to make a distinction, um, I'm not sure the, uh, the number, the, the three-quarters for FY twenty-two, but, um, as you know, just going back to, um, the testimony, it was really important for us in the backlog initiative, uh, which was, again, uh, backlog contracts that were built up over many years and was one of the, uh, central, um, outputs of the nonprofit task force and, and really, uh, baseline to reaffirming our commitment to the sector. Um, and that's why we've continued, we have not taken our eye off the ball, uh, with backlog. Um, I believe, and I, um, we can confirm either before the end of the hearing or, um, or, or after the hearing, that in FY twenty-two, for contracts and the way that we review sort of, uh, separate apart from the backlog initiative, uh, annual timeliness, those are contract actions that, uh, have a start date of the, the upcoming fiscal year and that are new contracts, right? So they're either, uh, brand-new RFP awards, they're brand-new negotiated acquisitions, um, and they're really, as per the Procurement Policy Board rules, intended to track, uh, the continuation of essential human services, uh, client services that the city contracts for. And so I believe that if, uh, we looked at, uh, contracts, uh, without New York City Public Schools, uh, which, as you know, do not track all of their contracts in, uh, Passport, that by September, we were over ninety to ninety-five percent, uh, timely, but I can definitely confirm those numbers with you either at the end of the hearing or after the hearing, Chair.
Wow, that's huge. Thank you. Ninety to ninety-five percent is a huge, that's a huge improvement from fiscal year twenty-two. So we'll definitely follow up on that. Uh, for fiscal year twenty-three, when is the timeline, so fiscal year twenty-three, the City Council allocated five hundred thirty-six million in discretionary awards to community-based organizations and nonprofits. However, only fifty-five percent of awards have been cleared by Mox. When is the timeline to complete reviews of the forty-five percent that is remaining, since there is not a lot of time left in this fiscal year?
Thank you for the question. Um, uh, one point of just clarification, I, I'm, I'm not sure our, our numbers are a little different than, than your number quoted, and I, I'm not sure if that happens to, uh, be partly that the number in- includes government-to-government, uh, contracts, which, uh, we at Mayor's Office Contract Services, uh, do not provide clearance. The Council clears those contracts, um, and so our, our number is, based on our recent data, um, that eighty-two percent of nonprofit awards have been cleared by Mox. But happy to do that, uh, sort of data with you afterwards, but, um, again, that there, there are certain contracts, uh, that don't come to us for clearance. I think that might be the discrepancy.
What was your percentage?
Eighty-two percent.
Thirty-two?
Eighty-two.
Eighty-two percent have been cleared?
Pardon?
So you're saying eighty-two percent have been cleared out of the five hundred thirty-six million in discretionary funds?
Eighty-two percent from the number that we have, which does not include contracts that do not come to us for clearance.
Okay, so we'll follow up.
And, yeah, I think just to make the point that the Mox clearance is not really, uh, a substantive review. It's really just, uh, kind of a process checklist to confirm that they're cleared by City Council, have done the capacity building training, and have submitted, uh, HHS pre-qualification. So our, our, our clearance process is very fast when we get the data from, uh, Council. We can just check that against the, the other criteria, and, uh, that, that's dependent on the transparency resolution timeline.
Thank you. What are some of the common issues that Mox wants to highlight when reviewing nonprofits and community-based organizations for these contracts that may be stalling them?
Thank you. Uh, thank you. Um, I apologize. Thank you, Chair. Um, so I, just to, to reiterate, I think we appreciate the time you took, um, uh, some, some time ago for us to walk you through the, the discretionary process. We've, we've done the same for the Controller's Office as well. It's, um, I, I think there's definitely some, uh, assumptions about, uh, the process, um, a- and, and really it's important to have that baseline in order to, to do the reform work going forward. Um, I think that the fact of the matter is, unfortunately, um, is that the, the process as is now, um, means that every contract will always be late in the discretionary, uh, discretionary process. Um, so, for example, you know, in last fiscal year, I believe that, um, over fifty percent, there was about fifty percent of the awards, uh, were allocated in the initial, um, Schedule C. Um, but obviously, uh, the process can't even start for, uh, vendors and the clearance process um, in, until they're named in Schedule C or subsequent resolutions. And last fiscal year, the majority of those awardees, uh, didn't happen until September, October, over ninety percent, right? And so if the, if the non-for-profit provider isn't named in the resolution, the process, uh, can start. Um, so I think there's lots of opportunity for really, uh, changing that process so that it's not late, um, inherently, and, and as I said in the testimony, uh, really excited to have been working with the Council on, on some of those ideas and, and hope to have some of that available to, to report out soon.
Thank you, and we know that there's been a new Mayor's Office of Nonprofits that have been established. Can you help us understand, um, what's going on? Because for contracts that are delayed for these nonprofits and community-based organizations, who should they be going to? Is there a dedicated team at Mox still that follows up with these groups in order to walk them through the process if they have been delayed? Or are they supposed to work directly with the Mayor's Office of Nonprofits now?
Uh, thank you for the question, uh, Chair. Director Ford, the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services, I know has, uh, uh, been going around and, and meeting and scheduling meetings with, uh, Councilmembers uh, to really, uh, explain, uh, the office and her vision, um, a- and, and where we hope, where we hope to be, um, uh, going forward. We are, uh, very close partners with the Mayor's Office of Nonprofit Services, um, in the direction of, uh, First Deputy Mayor, Mayor Wright. And so at, at this, at this time, we're lockstep, where contractors, nonprofits who have questions, uh, either come directly to us or they come directly to Director Ford, and we work, um, hand-in-hand in resolving those issues and answering those questions, and hope to have, uh, more information in the next few weeks with, uh, communication to the sector as we report out on the good work that's happened, uh, through the nonprofit, uh, Joint Task Force, um, and, and happy to, to have another meeting with, with you or your staff or anyone, um, on this committee or any other committee to, to really walk through that, that vision and how we intend to continue to work together.
Okay, so it's either or currently, and for the fiscal year twenty-four budget, do you know the headcount and the overall budget for the Mayor's Office of Nonprofits? Will that be changing from fiscal year twenty-three?
I'd have to defer to OMB, um, and, and for that, for that answer, Chair, but happy to, uh, pass it along and, and come back to you.
Okay, thank you. Many nonprofits hold multiple contracts with the same agency and are required to provide redundant documents for every contract every single year. In the past, Mox used a document vault feature on HHS Accelerator in order to streamline this process for many nonprofit vendors. A lot of people refer to this as the Common App application for college, and that's what people are dreaming and hoping for. Would it be possible to reintroduce this feature to eliminate duplicative document requirements?
Uh, thank you for the question, and I, and I love the, uh, um, reference to Common App. Uh, as a, a mother of a sixteen-year-old in his junior year of high school, I am very much, uh, going through that, that process now. Uh, so as I mentioned in my testimony, um, a document vault was a hu- So as I mentioned in my testimony, Document Vault was a huge part of the successful adoption of HHS Accelerator, and as you may know, was one of the many features that was born out of a working group led then by Deputy Mayor Gibbs under the Bloomberg administration. Passport was not built with the intent of having Document Vault, but as I said, we've heard loud and clear that this is essential and sort of a no-brainer, not only for the sector, but also this is the kind of thing that will cascade across other contracts as well, and that's why it's been, as we reprioritize where we're gonna invest our funds, that's at the top of the list, and that is on our timeline to complete in this administration.
Thank you. Last February, the mayor announced the development of Contract Stat system, which would be a key transparency metric to track performance management of city vendor agencies. What is the current status of Contract Stat and its development?
Thank you for the question, and I'll start if anyone wants to add information. So Contract Stat, we are working closely with our partners, including the mayor's office of nonprofit services, and are in a good place for what I'll call Phase One of Contract Stat, and it's one of the many sort of tools that we are gonna implement across the city and how we look at contract data and iterate on that data. And so we intend to continue to add functionality in terms of the type of data that we'll be looking at, but really the premise of Contract Stat, just to clarify, is not so much a thing, a separate thing from Passport, it really is the practice of bringing everyone into a room and looking at our data and really holding one another accountable and being transparent about that, and building that as part of our norm is really the biggest part of instituting Contract Stat. But happy to come back and show you a little bit of what it's gonna look like, but it will continue to change and iterate.
So is Contract Stat a dashboard that's going to be part of Ivalua, or is it built by somebody else?
It's, is this on? It is, can you hear me? Is that working? No? Okay. It's actually, earlier in the testimony, there was a mention of the procurement data warehouse, which is kind of a single source of truth for contract and financial data, and we're in the process of building that. Contract Stat is just literally another instance of a reporting interface on top of that, and it's really an extension of a, an overall policy by Director Flores to try to make consumable data and make it more available to the agencies and to the oversights on an ad hoc basis even going forward. So in many ways, Contract Stat at this point is becoming a, an initial implementation of that, some of that functionality as we complete the first release of the.
So who's developing this interface? Is it internal from Do-It?
Well, I am, I'm not from Do-It.
Okay, so you're doing it internally at Mox, okay.
I'm the acting CTO, but we actually, this is being built largely by Accenture at this point, and it does involve interfacing with data from a value, but once again, it all has to do with the procurement data warehouse that we're building, and the reporting tools we're putting on top of it, there'll be an overall reporting interface that agencies will be able to come through seamlessly to get whatever services they need from the Passport platforms.
So where does the budget come from for the procurement data warehouse? Is that from Do-It, or is that from Mox?
That's, would you like to speak to that?
That's Mox, under some of the one-time needs to be discussed for FY23, essentially.
And what is the total cost for fiscal year 24 for the procurement data warehouse?
So I think we'll need to come back to you with the exact breakdown just for procurement data warehouse. We intend, again, I think, really reprioritizing how we're gonna use those funds, understanding that, as you know, Chair, sort of, technology sometimes takes time, and we are sort of trying to phase some of the work that we're doing, right? Build that foundation. So where our first sort of phase of procurement data warehouse is gonna be our first focus to get that foundation done and then build upon that with more functionality. So I think we'll need to get back to you with sort of the estimated cost for the first phase of procurement data warehouse.
Okay, I'm asking because I know that the chief data analytics officer under Do-It is also building out an architecture for centralizing the data because it is so incredibly siloed right now, which makes it unusable.
Absolutely, and I would just, Chair, reiterate what I may have said the last budget hearing, but it's really essential for the approach of this administration. We invited OTI to do a full review of all of our technology in term, our staffing, soup to nuts, since last year March, and they provided recommendations, which, again, we said, "Come in, kick the tires, you know, lift the hood, and tell us," as the chief technology officer for the city of New York, what we need to do to improve, and to advise us on how we can be lockstep with the work that's happening across all the city agencies at the direction of the CTO. And so that's why our acting CTO is actually on loan to us from OTI. We have frequent bi-weekly meetings with high-level staff at OTI, and any decision that we're making around any technology decision, not just data, is in line with making sure that what's happening citywide, that we are following what those, what that vision is. Again, we, as a person who's worked in an oversight in many different capacities over many different, many years, it, we are not trying to build anything that is operating all by itself and that, you know, you'll need to hire some technologists with some, you know, outdated, you know, techno, outdated skills that lives, you know, in Montana or something, and he's the only person who can, who can work on the system, right? We wanna do exactly what is in line with the future of having this one-city voice and one-city experience, and so everything that we're doing, including Contract Stat and our procurement data warehouse, is aligned with that.
For the internal database that's being built by Accenture, is that a separate contract? Or is that an existing contract that you are creating a different work order for, that you already have with the Center for Passport?
So we're not entering into any new contracts with Ivalua or Accenture for any of the work that we've described, we're leveraging our existing agreements.
Okay, so it's part of the Passport contract?
Yeah, it's part of the sixteen-million contract with them over the three years, as well as the upcoming change order that I mentioned earlier.
Okay, thank you. So what is the actual estimated cost for the full development of Contract Stat total, then?
So, again, Chair, I think the, I know when we say Contract Stat, it kind of sounds like it's a separate, different thing. I don't have a cost specifically for Contract Stat because it is just essentially, you know, the first piece of what is going to be the foundation of how we look at data going forward. So, for example, and Dawn can definitely speak to this in more detail than I can, but part of the visualization of data is going to apply to all procurement data, right? And how do we visualize that data and what tool we use is not only gonna apply to Phase One of Contract Stat, but what our future state is for all data. So I don't have a specific number for just like Phase One of Contract Stat, it's work that is part of our ongoing vision of how do we mine the copious amounts of data that's produced from contracts and from different sources in a way that is usable for strategic decisions, not only for reporting out on transactions that have already, that have already happened.
Okay, we'll follow up on the procurement data warehouse costs, and I understand it's built into both the Passport contract with the Center as well as the procurement data warehouse, so we'll follow up on that. Next, I wanna talk about headcounts and vacancies. The preliminary plan introduces a program to eliminate the gap, the PEGS proposal through the elimination of vacant positions. What are Mox's current vacant positions as of February? How many vacancies are eliminated of these vacant positions, if any?
Chair, if you could repeat the second part of your question?
How many vacancies are eliminated of these vacant positions, if any are eliminated?
Thank you for the question. At this time, we have thirty-two vacant positions, twenty-five of which are directly at Mox, and we've been really doubling down on our outreach to ensure that we can, we can hire all, you know, up to the vacancies that we do have, and so I'm happy to report that of those twenty-five, fifteen are in various stages of the hiring process, with ten candidates already have been identified, so that the balance is ten vacancies of those that sit at the mayor's office contracts.
So out of the thirty-two vacancies, twenty-five of them are directly at Mox, and out of the twenty-five, you're trying to fill every single one of them?
Yeah, the twenty-five that are Mox positions, we are actively trying to fill every single one of them, and as I said, we're happy to report that fifteen of those twenty-five are various stages of interview process, background checks, doing references, but ten of them have already, of the fifteen, we've identified candidates and moving through that process. So we have ten, the balance is ten of those twenty-five.
Okay, and then the seven that aren't direct Mox positions, will those be eliminated?
Thank you for the question. So the seven that are through our agency partners are, you know, actively being pursued to hire for those positions as well through our agency partners. We've already gone through the processes all of the other agencies have citywide of taking our vacancy cut, which was thirty-three positions.
So it sounds like you won't be losing any headcount?
I think, so the thirty-two that the director alluded to is after the thirty-three cut that we had a month or so ago, month or two. So the, there were partner lines among the cut, and then the seven partner lines she's referring to are still, are what's active now.
Okay, so how many of the, how many positions are you losing? Total?
The positions that were already cut as part of the citywide vacancy reduction was thirty-three.
Okay.
And so the, so what we're left with after those thirty-three were cut were thirty-two, which includes agency partner lines, and of those thirty-two, twenty-five are left that are Mox positions, but the vacancy reduction has already, has already happened.
Okay, and do you feel confident that you're still able to carry out all of your responsibilities with, with more than fifty percent of the vacancies that were cut, then?
Thank you for the question, Chair, and I also really wanna thank the council, I know this has been a focus of this series of budget hearings and really important the partnership in supporting the agencies and doing the fundamental work that we're charged with doing. At this point, you know, we're confident that we are continuing to maintain the level of services both to vendor communities, stakeholders, and to our agencies, and we'll continue to work with OMB, you know, if there are additional, additional needs or issues.
Are there any increases in contractors that will be brought on for Mox, since you're losing full-time positions?
Thank you for the question. There are no specific plans for using alternative methods to do the work that we're charged with, we're continuing to do our work with our staff.
Okay, so there's no other contracts open for consultants other than the ones that exist with Accenture right now?
At the, at this moment, we have our existing contract portfolio, which I think at the last budget hearing, we may have given you some details on some other smaller contracts that we had at the time, in addition to the Passport-related contracts, so happy to follow up with you and update that list, which are, which are much smaller, smaller contracts.
Can you give us a breakdown of the thirty-three positions that were previously cut, that were vacant?
Yes, Chair, I think, let me start and my colleagues here will jump in if I miss anything. I believe of the thirty-three, thirteen of them were related to various positions to support the nonprofit office, including digital staff, our IT staff.
Yeah, I think it was across the board, though. We can kind of follow up with the table by unit and provide that after the hearing, but it might take a second to dig up right now.
Yeah, if we, we have it here somewhere, if we find it before the end of the hearing, we'll tell you, but to Matt's point, it was across the board. Obviously, we had to identify positions where we were still able to perform our services, and some of that also had to do with looking at positions that we hadn't been as successful as fulfilling and weren't sure if we would be able to fulfill in the short term and use those as part of our vacancy cut. But we'll follow up with the exact breakdown, but it cuts across our IT, our procurement operations, our nonprofit, our service, we, it cuts across all of our office area.
What is Mox's attrition rate in fiscal year 23?
Thank you for the question. I believe it's fourteen percent, but Matt will confirm for me, but I'd also say that we've, again, in the last twenty-four months, we've done sixty-five new hires with thirty-eight separations, so a net change in the positive of twenty-seven additional staff, but Matt will confirm in terms of the vacancy rate.
Yeah, well, just to clarify on that, that's over the past twelve months, so net plus twenty-seven over the past twelve months. I think it was, it's something like three or so per month.
Okay, thank you. I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Gennaro has joined us. During the Office Management of Budget Fiscal '24 preliminary budget hearing, OMB's director stated that the city has lifted the two-for-one restriction in December, leaving agencies free to hire up to their budget headcount without any restriction for the first time in three years. Has Mox been informed of the new measure from OMB?
Yes, all of the agency commissioners and directors were informed of that change in policy.
And you mentioned how you had fifteen positions, which you forecast to be filled. What are positions that Mox is currently, Mox currently has open and is actively hiring for?
The majority of the positions are in the IT-related work to support Passport and reporting, and some, we have a few, I think, in our procurement operations. I think we're fully staffed in our learning development area. Are there any other ones?
The plan shows Mox's budget crew in fiscal years 21 to 23 to reach a headcount of two-hundred-forty-five. What is the optimal number of headcount or positions necessary for Mox to efficiently deliver key city services?
Thank you for the question. I think, as I mentioned earlier, Chair, you know, we are really doubling down on ensuring that we hire up to our current headcount and continue to, you know, be flexible and creative and ensuring that we're leveraging the resources we have and really also supporting the staff that we have and ensuring that we create an environment at Mox where the folks that we have hired, the folks that are at Mox, stay and that we really mitigate attrition.
Thank you. Is Mox currently working with DC37 to conduct job fairs and/or has Mox participated in DC37 hiring halls?
Chair, as I mentioned in my testimony, we have begun to go to job fairs. I don't have at this time in front of me whether or not it was specific to DC37, I'd have to speak to our HR folks and see if that's something we've attended or is on our calendar, but we work really closely with GCAS and making sure that any opportunities that they've provided or any of our other partners, including universities and CUNY and others that have job fairs, that we have begun attending those.
Thank you. We, I want to flag again that we've been hearing from unions on their concerns about apprenticeships and the contracts, which we'll follow up with. Does Mox review RFPs to ensure fair rates and wages are included in agency contracts?
Chair, in our oversight role, we do review solicitations to ensure that they are in compliance with the PBB rules. with the PBB rules and other applicable rules and regulations. I'd have to defer to OMB sort of on the specific of titles and salaries.
Thank you. The Joint Mayor and Controller Task Force to Get Nonprofits Paid On Time recommended modifying human services contracts to create a contingency funding provision so that budgetary costs increases such as COLAs or changes to the indirect cost rates can be approved without having to undergo a contractual change. Has Mox been able to implement these contingency funding provisions into agency contracts? If not, what steps must be taken to insinuate this recommendation?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, we have been able to implement the allowance or contingency amendment, and agencies have begun since last year to process those. And I, I just have to take a moment and really say that, I know it sounds like it was simple, and we just added this clause. This was like earth-shattering, groundbreaking for the city of New York, for all parties to really, really come to a place of understanding that, you know, not only does the sector continue to show up for us every single time, whether it's an emergency or any other need, but that this is a concept that has been around for quite some time in the public works, capital construction contracts, but was not, was not part of the human services sector. So huge, a huge game changer, and we will continue to see dividends from that in the future as all of the contracts, applicable contracts have that clause, which will allow agencies to reduce tremendously the number of amendments that they have to do. But I think we have a number of the agencies, how far we've gotten so far in processing those allowance clauses.
Yeah, so it's sixty percent of the allowance amendments have been registered, and about the remaining thirty-five or so are in progress. So these are the ones looking backward, and then going forward, it will just be incorporated into the human service contracts.
Thank you. Prior to the fiscal twenty-three adopted budget, health and human service providers and our cost rate was negotiated on a year-to-year basis. However, the council successfully secured a baseline funding of sixty million in the fiscal year twenty-three adopted budget for HHS providers indirect operating costs to ensure equitable access to public benefits and better support of the city's frontline workers. What is the estimated shortfall in indirect rate funding in fiscal year twenty-four and the out-years?
Thank you for the question, Chair, and so just to distinguish the workforce investment of sixty million, which then, as you may recall, OMB was able to find an additional eight million, so that sixty-eight million investment, workforce, workforce investment, separate apart from the ICR initiative, which was started in the last administration. And the city continues to be committed to funding ICR rates. And we, for any vendor, when we open up the application period for the next, for each fiscal year, who may not have had the opportunity to receive an ICR, approved ICR rate the last round, or their rate is expiring, has expired, it lasts for three years, we actively reach out to vendors, and even those that we've reached out to that don't respond and provide an application for an ICR rate, we do multiple rounds of reaching out to them to ensure that they get through that process and have that ICR rate. And again, OMB and the city has made a commitment to continue funding, funding those ICR rates.
Is the sixty million additional in ICR funding baseline in the fiscal twenty-three adopted budget sufficient to fund providers that applied for and were approved at a rate of, a rate of above ten percent?
So again, just to distinguish the sixty-eight million investment from ICR rates, and so the ICR rates are funded, budgeted for, and the city continues to maintain that commitment for ICR rates.
Thank you. Does the administration plan to increase funding to the ICR rate initiative? When will providers receive guidance on future indirect rate funding?
Thank you, Chair. As stated previously, the city remains committing, committed to honoring the accepted ICR rates. The city continues the ICR application process each year for expiring ICRs and new eligible providers. If the recertification yields a rate increase, the city will be making funding adjustments to the contract budgets to support those changes.
Okay, in your opinion, what can the council do to strengthen the ICR rates for our health and human services providers even further?
Thank you for the, for the question. I definitely will defer to OMB in the ongoing conversations that are happening now for the budget cycle of additional collaboration with the council.
Thank you. The Human Health Council is advocating for changes around inequitable pay among human service workers with emphasis on cost of living adjustments, increased living wage, and more. How much of the citywide contract budget addresses this request?
Thank you, Chair. Yes, I am aware of the advocacy from the sector on this issue, and as previously stated, we'll defer to OMB in discussions during the budget cycle with council.
A bill heard by Contracts Committee in January requires a prevailing wage to be paid for all human service providers on city contracts. Does Mox support this proposal?
Thank you, Chair. I think as we stated during that hearing a few months ago, we have some, and I'll refer to the testimony and the Q and A during that session. Again, we, in spirit, want to make sure that we're supporting the sector and had some specific concerns with the bill as drafted. And as we said then, and I'll reiterate now, you know, always will make ourselves available to discuss that in more detail.
Thank you. For contracts of childcare services, the city is facing a mounting crisis of delayed payments and contracts that have left some preschool providers struggling towards insolvency. Of the backlog of unpaid pre-K and 3K contracts, how much has been cleared by Mox in fiscal year twenty-three?
Thank you, Chair. I definitely would have to defer to New York City Public Schools to respond to their full portfolio of pre-K and 3K. And then do not have this time in front of me whether or not any of those contracts were part of the initial backlog, but happy to, you know, circle back with you and see if any of those contracts were part of the backlog. But for the overall program, I would refer back to New York City Public Schools.
Thank you. We'll follow up about how much remains to be cleared and what the plans are to expedite those contracts towards payments. Could you tell us how Mox is working with DOE's rapid response team on this?
Chair, at this time, we work closely with New York City Public Schools on a number of initiatives and some specific contract issues. And I would have to get back to you on some of the work and our correspondence with them on this particular initiative. I apologize, I don't have that here in front of me.
Okay. I do not have any further questions? Okay, and I'll pass it over to my legal counsel.
Thank you, Mox, for coming to attend, and thank you, Chair, for everything you've done today. We will now turn to public testimony. For in-person panelists, please come up to the dais once your name has been called. For virtual panelists, we will be calling individuals one by one to testify. We will be limiting public testimony today to three minutes each, so please begin once the sergeant has called the timer. Council members who have questions for a particular panelist should raise their hands. And council members who are here virtually, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and the chair will call on you after the panelist has completed their testimony. For virtual panelists, once your name is called, a member of our staff will unmute you, and the sergeant at arms will set the timer and give you the go-ahead to begin. Please wait for the sergeant to announce that you may begin before delivering your testimony. The first in-person panel today will be Lauren Siciliano, Lisa Rivera, and Justine Olderman. Please come up to the dais if your name's been called. You can begin when ready.
Good afternoon. My name is Justine Olderman, and I'm the executive director at The Bronx Defenders. However, I, along with my co-panelists, are speaking to you today on behalf of all of the criminal, civil, immigration, and family legal service providers in New York City. We just sat here and listened to Mox testify. They went through sort of the top three categories of contracts that come through their office. We recognize that legal service providers were not in the top three. However, I know I don't need to remind all of you that our organizations provide constitutionally mandated and statutorily required critical legal services to low-income New Yorkers. We are here today to sound the alarm about the dire funding and contracting crisis that we are collectively facing. Our organizations provide critical legal and social services to hundreds of thousands of low-income New Yorkers every year. We defend people from incarceration, eviction, family separation, deportation. We connect people to life-saving benefits, housing, food, job training, substance and mental health support, and educational opportunities. We are a lifeline to low-income New Yorkers in need. But we're here before you today because we need a lifeline of our own. Our funding is woefully inadequate to attract and retain talent, keep pace with rising costs of healthcare, occupancy, and OTPS, meet caseload standards for parents, serve all tenants facing eviction proceedings, and manage the amazing amount of discovery we are now receiving in criminal cases thanks to statewide discovery reform. Moreover, despite the roadmap created by the task force that was discussed earlier this morning to get nonprofits paid on time, and contrary to what you heard from Mox this morning, and Mox, when they testified in front of you back in January at the hearing you held then, the contracting system and the invoicing process continue to this day to be so dysfunctional, we cannot even access the inadequate funding the city does send our way. And I would just add that the cuts that you explored with Mox this morning to their personnel, it doesn't bode well for their ability to get on top of the contracting crisis that we're here to testify to today. The combination of these funding and contracting problems, it has literally brought us to our collective knees. We have already seen, as I'm sure you are well aware of, critical social service organizations be forced to close their doors for the very same problems that we are here to testify to today. We are literally pleading with the council to make sure this does not happen to the legal service providers that thousands and thousands of low-income New Yorkers depend on. I would just like to spend one minute focusing and responding, if I may, to some of the issues that were raised by Mox this morning when they talked about the efforts that they have made to address the contracting crisis. The city's contracting crisis is multifaceted. It touches every point of the timeline. From the issuance of RFPs, we are two years behind on major contracts for RFPs, to the registration of baseline discretionary contracts and amendments. These delays for us today, despite the efforts that they have made, are unsustainable and create an inability in our organizations to plan ahead, and we are constantly scrambling just to be able to make payroll. We have been forced to take out high-interest loans, hold off paying vendors, rent experts. We are forced to leave vacant staff lines unfilled, which results in increasing workload for our ever shrinking staff that we do have. But the most egregious aspect of this, and I know I have testified about this before in front of this committee, is the city's abject failure to pay us on time. Because what happens is when we cannot come up with the cash to bridge the gap, we are forced to underspend our contracts. What that in effect does is make the city's promise to low-income New Yorkers in need of our legal services an empty promise. This morning, you asked questions about the allowance clause, the thing that would help move contracts and amendments along. I can attest that we have four different contracts with the city. We have yet to see an allowance clause amendment registered for fiscal year twenty-three. At the very same time that Mox stands before you celebrating the work that's been done to address the delay and clear the backlog, the backlog today, right now, is growing to epic proportions. I was stunned to hear, and my colleagues and I all looked at each other, when Mox said that as of September, ninety-five percent of the contracts had been registered. We are still, for The Bronx Defenders, we are still awaiting a six-million-dollar city council discretionary contract. It wasn't until a month ago that we had our ten-million-dollar parent representation contract registered, and the backlog of the amendments for years going back to 2020 were just registered in the last couple of months. The contracting delays, I would just flag because there was a lot of discussion about passport and accelerator. They are compounded by contract management systems that are inefficient, complex, and overburdened some. You talked about the document vault. To this day, we have to upload the same documents for every single one of our contracts over and over again, duplicating efforts and baking in inefficiencies. In addition, I'm not sure if you're aware, but as of right now, the different city agencies all have different approaches to the way that they use these systems, requiring us to try to figure out exactly who does what and how, requiring us ultimately to have to duplicate efforts and causing delays. Third, there wasn't any discussion of this this morning, but the passport and accelerator systems don't speak to each other. So there's all the pre-qualification that we have to do, then we have the contracts and passport. We upload our budgets, they get approved, then it's, the system moves to accelerator, where we have to re-upload budgets, but yet in a different form. Finally, the city requires us to upload budgets, not just for our contract, but every single type of award, every investment that you spoke about this morning, the WEI money, pay parity money, COLA money, every single one of them requires a separate standalone budget. This is only like the tip of the ice, you know, the iceberg in terms of the mind-boggling inefficiencies of this system. These contracting issues are a reflection of more than just technical and mechanical problems. They are a reflection of how this city values the work that we do. And more importantly, it is a reflection of the way this city values the people that we serve. The message that the city is sending today is loud and clear, and it is not pretty. If the city wants to send a different message, we urge this committee and each of you in the council to continue to be relentless in your oversight of the efforts that are being made to implement the task force recommendations to get nonprofits paid on time. There are short-term recommendations that are in that report that years later have yet to be put into place. I'll now turn it over to my colleague. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Lauren Siciliano, and I'm the chief operating officer at the Legal Aid Society. I am here to talk about critical funding shortfalls that threaten legal service, the ability of legal services providers like us to provide essential services to New Yorkers and to deliver the constitutionally and legally mandated services that my colleague just spoke about. Providers are facing a staffing and workload crisis. Since the pandemic, we have seen dramatic spikes in attrition, with rates raising by seventy to, in some cases, more than two-hundred percent. We are all facing double-digit attrition rates, in some cases as high as twenty-five percent. And once those experienced staff leave, we are finding it difficult, if not impossible, to attract candidates due to the low salaries that we are able to offer. We are therefore seeking a twenty-five percent increase in our contract personnel budgets to address this crisis and just stabilize our workforce. In addition, we are calling on the city to continue the workforce enhancement initiative in future contracts and to expand it to discretionary contracts. These resources are essential. Our collectively bargained salaries increase each year while our baseline budgets have remained flat. Our flat contract budgets also do not cover year-over-year cost increases for things like utilities and space and other OTPS costs, which can increase by up to three percent, or healthcare premiums, which can increase easily by ten percent each year. Put another way, we face budget reductions every single year because of our flat contracts, while these same costs are covered centrally for city agencies. Many of our contracts also fall short of covering the full cost of service delivery. This includes funding to meet the demands of discovery reform as well as technology needs. It includes dollars to fully fund right-to-council programs such as universal access and housing courts, and it includes funding essential to deliver high-quality family defense programs with social work- with social work and parent advocate services. To meet these needs, we are therefore calling on the city to provide $125 million to defender organizations, $300 million to dozens of civil legal services providers who administer critical housing, eviction, immigration, and other work, and $30 million for New York's family defense legal providers. Lastly, there's been a lot of discussion this morning about contract registration, but I want to amplify a point that my colleague made about payments. Once the contracts are registered and we can actually begin submitting for reimbursement, invoicing for payment, the invoicing process itself is extremely onerous and inflexible. It involves detailed line item reviews that require pages of information and spreadsheets and record-keeping to meet extremely detailed and often shifting requirements. Invoicing is further delayed by the budget modification process, which can delay payments by weeks or in some cases, months. We are therefore calling on the city to implement a streamlined invoice review process and to increase contract advances to 50% to help address delays in the invoicing process. Thank you. I now turn it over to my colleague.
My name is Lisa Rivera, and I'm the President and CEO of Nylag at the New York Legal Assistance Group. Thank you for the opportunity today to discuss the impact of insufficient funding by the city, our contracting issues, as well as recommendations for the future. Historic issues with contracting funding levels are not new. They threaten our ability to continue to provide expert advocacy, retain staff, and to respond to the ever-increasing need in the community. Like my colleague said, we are sounding the alarm. Legal service providers are facing a staffing crisis. Low salaries contribute to a high rate of attrition. The result is fewer advocates to take on cases and higher caseloads for those that remain, which turns into a vicious cycle of attrition and burnout. The ripple effect goes beyond our clients, beyond the walls of our organizations. It extends to our clients and the people that we serve. As workload increases, each advocate has less and less time to spend preparing for their cases and building trust with their clients, which results in less effective representation. Contract delays in every single step of the process ultimately results in a cut to our funding. When the city doesn't pay us on time for work, we are forced to rely on lines of credit, taking out loans, delaying payments to vendors, and using other funding sources that are meant for infrastructure to our offices and other programming in order to make ends meet. Many of our resources, staffing and financial, are drained by contract delays, so we wind up paying fees on every contract that we have. Funding amounts must reflect the cost of doing this essential work, and it needs to be paid on time. This is how the city can ensure that it's speaking to its values and that our clients are served. Repeated and long-term delays of RFP process really creates uncertainty and instability for providers. We cannot plan. Without knowing whether our contracts are going to be renewed, how much funding we're actually going to get for our organizations, and for what services we might be providing the following year, we cannot have the staffing and programming in place to meet the need. While the city can and does offer to extend contracts through a negotiated acquisition process, NAEs, these extensions only last for a year and do very little to mitigate the problem. In fact, they cause even more problems for our organizations. So, recommendations. We're asking for accountability in every step of the contracting procurement process. While some exist already, it clearly is not enough. We're asking for longer contract terms for baseline contracts with COLAs baked in and funding increases aligned with anticipated rising costs like the ones that Justine outlined above. We are asking that the city council allow for renewals of discretionary grants for multiple years instead of starting the process year to year, over and over again. We're asking that the city be required to cover interest occurred on our loans, on our line of credit that we are forced to take out because we are waiting to get paid years later. With respect to Passport and Accelerator, we would like that document vault so that organizations only have to upload the required documents one time and not have to do it across dozens and dozens of contracts. We'd like to ensure that every agency contract specialist is properly trained in the program, and there's consistency amongst specialists and agency to agency. Reduction of the annual documents that we have to submit for renewals. And last but not least, invoicing. We need a streamlined invoice review and budget modification process. It should not take us longer to invoice than it was to register. We also would like the city to provide an advance of 50% instead of 25% on our contracts to help address the delays in invoicing so that we, as organizations, have the cash flow to make payroll and other expenditures in our organizations. Thank you.
Do you mind, thank you so much for coming. I want to acknowledge Councilmember Lee has also joined. Would it be possible for us to receive your testimony, written testimony by email? We would love to make sure that we address a lot of your concerns, see where we could legislate, and see where we could continue to keep them accountable in further hearings.
We'd be happy to provide that.
Thank you so much. We really appreciate you taking the time. It has to be sent to testimony@council.nyc.gov.
Yes, and just to be clear, we do have much more substantial written testimony than the oral comments that we've made. It does include all the recommendations, and as we indicated, the three of us are here representing many more legal service providers.
Thank you. Are you all part of the nonprofit task force by the Controller and Mayor's Office where they have a group of nonprofits that participates in that?
No.
No.
Were you invited to that?
No.
No.
We were, we did ask for and we did receive a meeting with Karen Ford, and that was a great first step. We did highlight to her that we would like to be included in these roundtables and these discussions. When the task force was first put together, none of the legal service providers were included. If you look at that, that front page that has the list of everybody, it's the first place I went. We were not consulted during that process, but I have to say, you know, that the task force report has in many ways become our bible, and we were very excited to see it, even though we were disheartened that we were not included in it. But we are disheartened to see the slow pace of the implementation of those recommendations.
Yeah, I would also love to stay in touch if you guys have business cards. I would love them so we could follow up after. Thank you.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Sorry, as a former nonprofit exec, I have to say we love the work that Nylag does, not just for the clients but also to help guide us as, you know, staffers, so thank you for that. But just a quick question, follow-up to what Chair Wong was saying. Were you guys part of the previous iteration of NRC or no? The Nonprofit Resiliency Committee? So you guys were not part of that either?
No.
Okay. Good to know.
Yeah, I mean, what you're highlighting is sort of one of the, one of the struggles that we have, as I sort of started by saying, you know, we provide constitutionally mandated and statutorily required legal services, and we are literally a lifeline to so many people in helping people find stability and create stability, not just for themselves and their families, but entire communities. But when we sort of think about, and when the city talks about sort of the human services sector, the legal services providers usually end up standing on the outside.
If you haven't, I would just add, like, the consistency also across the agencies is really important in terms of the contracting, because that was always crazy for us.
Absolutely. And consistency across the agencies allows all of us to understand how we move forward. We see, the issue that we are facing now has been longstanding for decades. Seeing contracts in process or in progress on Passport is mind-boggling, because it could be there for a month, two months, six months, nine months, to a year. In-progress does not allow us to have sufficient information for us to be able to plan for the future.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
I'm going to call the next panel now. Next up, we have Jackie Del Valle and Dash Yates-Lonsky. Apologize, apologies if I mispronounced that there. As a reminder, if there's anyone else who wishes to testify here in person, please fill out a witness slip and hand it to the sergeants.
Participatory research and policy support to strengthen the work of grassroots, community-based organizations. Stabilizing NYC is a coalition of 20 grassroots organizations to fight tenant harassment and speculation at the hands of private equity between legal resources and organizing. Thank you for holding this hearing, and Councilmember Wong for her leadership and the tough questions. I've been working directly in procuring awards for discretionary funding for over 15 years, and it's always been long and painful, but things seem as bad as ever despite the online digitized portals and the processes and a clearly more committed administration. As the council and my colleagues have just testified, nonprofits receiving discretionary funding are asked to perform vital services, meet deliverables, run programs, pay and manage staff, yet do not see the money until long after the fiscal year is ended. This has been happening year after year, and these multi-year funding delays have compounded. For this current fiscal year, my organization, Take Root Justice, was awarded a little over $2 million in discretionary funding. This is FY '23. We have not received any of our money, and our HPD awards, which includes the stabilizing NYC initiatives, has only just begun the contract registration process. We've also not registered our FY '22 HPD awards, and the 19 other SNYC nonprofits are in the same sad, frustrating boat. For the backlog, first and foremost, we ask that groups to immediately receive a significant portion of the owed money through the advances in bridge loans. I appreciate a lot of the testimony that Mox gave today and the work that they're doing on the backlog, but as pointed out by the first panel, there's still millions and millions of dollars that's not made its way to organizations. And we really want to see, starting in FY '24, groups receive advances at the start of the fiscal year, contracts registered within six months of getting an award, not one to two years. And community groups that receive city fundings really need to be looked at the whole process so that the vendor responsibility determination could be a separate process, where groups become annually registered to receive city funding so that, that way, it's not tied to each and every single award and contract, which Mox themselves pointed out is a huge part of the problem, that you're having to do the service delivery and register the contracts, and those could very easily be separate processes. So, in conclusion, years and years of egregiously late payments on the HPD contracts have compounded and are jeopardizing the impact of my organization and the stabilizing NYC coalition. Organizations lose resources fighting not for their emissions but cash flow solutions. These multi-year funding delays hurt the low-income communities of color that the council intends to empower. Thank you.
Thank you. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Chair Wong, Councilmember Brewer, and members of the committee. My name is Dash Yates-Lonsky, and I'm the Advocacy Associate at Urban Pathways. Thank you for the opportunity to testify at today's hearing on the importance of a COLA for the human services workforce. Urban Pathways is a nonprofit homeless services and supportive housing provider, serving approximately 3,900 single adults annually through a full continuum of services. We hold city contracts with DHS, DOHMH, and HRA for our drop-in center for safe havens and congregate and scattered site supportive housing. We also offer a wide range of additional programming, including street outreach, total wellness, employment, and consumer advocacy programs. We thank the council for supporting the sector with a $60 million workforce investment and for being vocal champions of the Just Pay campaign last year. Unfortunately, the investment fell short of the 4% COLA the council had included in budget negotiations and was much delayed, with providers waiting six months or longer for guidance. After fringe benefits and taxes, less than 2% was able to be applied to direct worker salaries. This year, we are asking for a 6.5% COLA. As we do so, we also ask the council to ensure it is included in the budget as a cost-of-living adjustment and not some other named initiative. Providers have to be able to rely on the budget documents and percentage to enact wage changes while waiting for money to flow from the city. We believe a 6.5% COLA would cost an estimated $200 million and would help workers just keep pace with inflation. The underpayment of our workforce on government contracts is the biggest challenge facing our organization. Low wages impact both our staff and those we serve by making it difficult to hire and retain qualified staff. While there are staff vacancies, the dedicated staff we do have are taking on greater workloads that lead to burnout and ultimately add to turnover, and the constant recruitment and hiring necessary to fill positions overwhelm HR and administrative staff. When I first met our clients, the first thing they said to me was, "Don't leave." Those we serve work closely with staff to meet their goals, including maintaining their mental health, managing their chronic illness, getting back into the workforce, and obtaining permanent housing, among so many others. The quality of this work is heavily reliant on relationships, which are difficult to build when you have multiple case managers in a short period of time. What's worse is that many members of our workforce qualify for the same benefits they are helping their clients to obtain. 15% of the workforce qualifies for food stamps, and many of our staff work two or three jobs to make ends meet. Moreover, we have staff members who have been forced to move into shelters while they work to help others exit that system. The city must address the contracted wages that keep the critical human services workforce living in poverty. This is also an issue of broader equity. 75% of the 80,000 human services contract workforce identifies as people of color and 70% as women. The COLA is a short-term fix but will not fix the wage gap in the long term. We implore the city to also examine the base pay of the human services workforce in its contrast. Thank you.
Thank you so much, and I also want to acknowledge Councilmember Brewer has joined us.
Thank you for your testimony. As a reminder, if anyone is remaining who wishes to testify in person, please fill out a witness slip. If not, we will now move to virtual testimony. First virtual panelist we will call today is Annie Minguez, followed by Greg Morris, and then JT Falcone. Annie Minguez, you may begin when the sergeants call the time.
Starting time.
Annie Minguez, you've been unmuted, but we don't hear you.
Hello? Can you hear me?
Yep, we hear you now. Go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you so much. Thank you, Chair Wong, and the members of the Committee on Contracts for the obviously needed testify on the mayor's, Mayor Adams' preliminary budget as it relates to, as it relates to Mox. My name is Annie Minguez, and I'm the... Hello? Can you hear me?
Yeah, we hear you.
You're hearing me, yep. My name is Annie Minguez, and I'm the Vice President of Government and Community Relations at Good Shepherd Services. My written testimony will focus on the need to improve the procurement relationship between nonprofits and government, and the need for greater investments in the human services sector to address the staffing crisis severely impacting our ability to support children, families, and communities across New York City. As a former member of the Nonprofit Resiliency Committee, Good Shepherd Services has been a steadfast advocate for the indirect cost rate initiative, workforce enhancements, and COLA that support the lowest-paid frontline positions. Good Shepherd has also worked tirelessly to improve the human services contracting process and is looking forward to working with the newly-established Office of Nonprofit Services. Nonprofits continue to experience delays in registering contracts and receiving payments. This is particularly true for our DOE contracts that may take up to one year, if not more, to register. As Director Lisa Flores mentioned today, there are significant delays on the registration of the city council discretionary awards, and for Good Shepherd, that we were not designated a delved vendor until December of 2022. This delay impeded our ability to financially fund. I will say, there is a high turnover rate in our agencies for Good Shepherd. That's doubled from fiscal year '21. To fiscal year '22, we are now at 49%. And that high turnover rate should concern everyone. Just during the preliminary, preliminary budget hearings, at the general welfare preliminary budget hearing, the ACS Commissioner hired that they were hiring additional staff. And at their latest youth development specialist job posting, they had a starting salary of $47,000. And after five years, that would increase to about $60,000, along with a $2,500 sign-on bonus. And as Chair Ayala mentioned then, nonprofits cannot compete with these offers because our contracts will not allow us to pay annual increases or bonuses. Additionally, during the education preliminary hearing, I testified that school psychologists and social work salaries pay schedules. Their schedule states that their starting salary is $65,000, and after five years, it increases to $99,000. While we thank the administration and the council for the workforce investments in the past two years, we are concerned that Mayor's, Mayor Adams' preliminary budget omitted a COLA altogether. This is why the Human Services Council is asking for the administration and council to negotiate a budget that includes a 6.5 cost-of-living adjustment and salary parity so that human services... and salary parity so that human services providers across New York City can pay living wages to staff that are equal to the salary compensation and benefits available to the city, to city workers. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. And next, we will hear from Greg Morris, followed by JT Falcone, and then Penny Bunyavroch. Apologies if I mispronounced that. Greg Morris, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time. Good morning, everyone. Thank you for making this time. Good thanks, Chair Wong, for our leadership and the opportunity to provide testimony. Greg Morris, CEO of the New York City Employment Training Coalition, the largest city-based workforce development association in the country. For 25 years, this coalition has played a vital role in presenting and championing policy priorities that support the alignment and coordination of workforce development and economic development in New York City. We seek to reduce and eliminate barriers to employment access and supply every New Yorker with the skills, training, and education needed to survive in the 21st century. We are essentially an association representing 200 workforce development providers, serving as many as 200,000 New Yorkers, largely from under-resourced neighborhoods, identify as BIPOC, low income, low and moderate income. And we also serve as what I think is connective tissue, seeking to connect the strategic, operational, and programmatic needs and gaps that exist between stakeholders, whether it's the city and state, whether it's philanthropy and higher education, whether it's between providers and employers. I'm testifying today because our providers, as you know, workforce development providers in the city, they're underfunded. They experience delays in contract payments. Our, the vendor relationship that they have with the city is such that there aren't built-in COLAs. This is all content you've heard from other providers. And as someone who's been in the provider space for 25 years, I guess what I really want to say during the course of this, besides the New York City Employment Training Coalition is here, we're experiencing contractual challenges, but we're here to support the needs of New Yorkers who want access to great employment opportunities, quality jobs for all. But I'm really here to say this. This is a circumstance where there is plenty of content, reports, research, and other guidance for how we can change and evolve our procurement system in New York City. Until we do, until there is the investment of time and resource to fix our broken procurement system, we are going to continue to have the same conversations. So as much as I sit here today and say to you, "Support workforce development." I want to see city council investments in workforce development, workforce providers. I support the legal community that was here earlier. I support the human services providers, the affordable housing folks, the community-based providers. We all deserve more to ensure that our staff is funded well and that our contract obligations are being met and that we can meet unique and dynamic needs. When the pandemic hit, we didn't leave town, we dug in. But specific to Mox and the engagement with Mox and the ongoing conversation that's happened at these hearings, we have a staffing crisis in the city. As much as each of the different hearings have said, you've heard directly from city agencies and others, "We'll figure it out, we're doing fine." We know they're not. The problem's not being solved. Contractual payments are not met on time. We know how to fix that. All of the content, as referenced by the chair and others during this conversation, is available to us. We just need to take the steps to do it. That can't happen, I think, until this city administration, and here's where I would suggest that the council, in its, its role, needs to seek to have either subcommittees or task force involvement to say, "We want regular quarterly reporting on the progress of the investment that the city is making to fix a broken procurement system." Because until we do that, the dollars that are flowing, the billions that flow to vendors, the nonprofit human services sector vendors, will continue to be delays from budget to amendment to contract registration to invoicing. It needs to be fixed. And I think your job at this moment may be to say, "Here's how we fix it." We want to hear on a regular basis how it's actually being fixed. And potentially, I would argue, you need to convene the city agencies and intermediaries, like some of us on this call, whether it's NYC, etc., the Human Services Council, UNH, and others, to work in collaboration. I know this is challenging to hear, but in collaboration with Mox and others to fix this problem. And we need to start with an honest conversation, which is, "It's broken." We can fix it because we know how, but we have to take the steps to be able to do it. On that note, I'll pause and express my thanks once again for the time.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Next, we'll hear from JT Falcone, followed by Penny Bunyavroch and Rosemarie Pinkz. JT Falcone, you can begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Thank you, Chair Wong, for, for the opportunity to testify today. I'm JT Falcone, and I'm here representing United Neighborhood Houses, UNH. We represent the settlement houses in New York City and New York State who provide a wide array of services for New Yorkers of all ages that are very community-based. I, I really appreciated Chair your line of questioning today, specifically around human services, contract delays. And, and there's two things really that I'm here to, to lift up and push hard in this conversation that, that you've already brought up and identified as priorities for council, and that's a COLA for human service workers and prevailing wage legislation sponsored by Councilmember Stevens that, that you've talked about in this hearing, as well as the, the last joint hearing with Youth Services and Aging. I, I think hearing from fellow panelists, it's clear that our sector is in a state of crisis. We've been saying that we're, we're towards the, towards the edge of a staffing cliff for many years now, and we're tumbling. COLA is a parachute that can help to slow the momentum of this tumble. Getting a 6.5% COLA in the New York City budget will help to relieve some of the economic pressures faced by our workforce. And those economic pressures are strong. UNH did an analysis recently where we found that a significant percentage of our workforce, nearly, nearly 25% of our workforce, were facing similar levels of economic insecurity as the New Yorkers that they're serving through their, their human service programs, right? So the circumstances have led to tremendous turnover and tremendous vacancy rates at nonprofits. And we've been hearing from agencies across New York City how vacancies lead to challenges doing their work. Same for us. Vacancies lead to challenges doing our work. And it becomes a vicious cycle in human services. When you're contracted, you can't maximize your contract if you don't have complete staff. And then the city turns around and says, "Okay, well, you're not maximizing your contract, so we're going to cut that budget line through a peg, and it's not actually impacting services." So all of this budget magic leads to a situation where we are in a downward spiral. And services that New Yorkers desperately need are being held up in, in, in budget tricks and pegs. So the COLA is the immediate fix, and the prevailing wage legislation, Introduction 510, that, that you brought up earlier, Chair Wong, that, that is the long-term solution, right? Without funding, without passing that bill and fully funding it, are, you can't COLA your way out of this crisis at this point, even at 6.5% year over year for five years, starting at minimum wage, you're still under $20 an hour five years from now? So percentages, they can help in the short term. But, but the long-term solution is that prevailing wage legislation. So I'm here once again to say thank you for bringing it up, and, and we really hope to see that passed this year and included in the budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Falcone. Next, we'll hear from Penny Bunyavroch, followed by Rosemarie Pinkz and Michael Antwerp. Penny Bunyavroch, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Penny Bunyavroch. I'm the Director for Contracts Management for Catholic Charities of New York. Thank you for holding this hearing today. I will be submitting written testimony and would just like to highlight a few points here. Our Catholic charity staff has done extraordinary work over the past year responding to the unprecedented migrant crisis by providing food, clothing, basics, and assessments, and at the same time, responding to urgent needs around housing instability, hunger, and a range of other issues impacting low-income families across New York City. We applaud the city for following through on key action items recommended by the Joint Task Force to get nonprofits paid on time, but are concerned about some ongoing challenges. And I want to echo and reinforce all of the issues from my previous panelists, including the staffing crisis, low wages, constant recruitment, hiring challenges, and duplication of effort. We've also experienced the same challenges. First, I just want to emphasize that the fiscal and administrative burdens of contract delays are tremendous. Nonprofits can't be expected to float the city to fund services that it pays providers late on. Over the past two fiscal years, Catholic Charities has had to outlay almost $4.5 million in emergency food costs incurred during the pandemic. For FY21 and '22, we had a total of eight discretionary contracts totaling approximately $5 million that were registered late and paid late because of delays and the lack of clear instructions from the funding agency on invoicing. We must continue to prioritize efforts to increase efficiency, transparency, and accountability in the city's procurement process. We supported Intro 511, requiring the PPB to create timeframes for city agencies to complete the procurement process, and we believe this is a critical step. Secondly, nonprofits have had to operate with contracts that don't allow regular escalator clauses for wages and direct costs. We must support efforts to re-implement annual COLAs. It is not sustainable for nonprofits to absorb yearly increases in rent, utility insurance, and other costs that are funded at flat rates over multiple years. Finally, we also advocate for continued funding for the Indirect Cost Rate Initiative in FY24, and also for its application to all discretionary contracts to fully fund the cost of providing services. Thank you for the opportunity to testify. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Next, we will hear from Rosemarie Pinkz, followed by Michael Antwerp. And as a reminder, if there's anybody who still wishes to testify remotely, please use the Zoom raise hand function, and our team will send you an invitation. Rosemarie Pinkz, you may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Good afternoon, council members. My name is Rosemarie Pinkz. I am the Finance Director at Encore Community Services, nonprofit organization serving older adults on Manhattan's West Side. We run older adult centers and support affordable housing in Midtown, as well as serve half a million half-home-delivered meals at local residents every year. Our staff is literally a lifeline for aging New Yorkers who are critical, in critical need of food, resources, and community. But we, like other, like our entire sector, are struggling because the wages afforded by our city contracts are not competitive. We have extreme difficulty hiring and filling crucial positions like delivery drivers and caseworkers, and have had to turn to using temp agency as a solution. Retention is a challenge, which is a problem because we are asking people to trust us and return to, and they turn to us for help, yet we can't offer consistency. Pay for human service workers is an equity issue. Why does our workforce, primarily made up of women and people of color, make 25 to 30% less than our counterparts in the government and our sectors? Our teams carry out essential functions for the city, which has been celebrated when COVID sent so many of the workforce's home. Our people showed up, and we kept services available to everyone who needed us during that incredibly difficult time. Now, instead of relief, we find inflation has made our already stagnant wages seem even more dismal. Poverty wages mean that a significant portion of employees of human resource organizations rely on benefits, including rental assistance and Medicaid. They are often not able to work beyond the halftime without risking those benefits, impacting the organization as well as their capacity to improve their position. This should not be a case for government contracted jobs. We were glad to see that the city commit to a 4% increase in last year's budget, even though it's just a starting place and does not even match inflation. But we are disappointed that we are here today to talk about next year's budget while we, while our staff has yet to see a cent of that money. It's just one of the many examples of how the city's slow pace when it comes to nonprofit hurts us all. We appreciate the effort to create prevailing wage requirements for city contracted human service workers, though we ask that there is funding attached to the proposed bill so that it does not become an unfunded mandate for human service organizations. We applaud efforts to address the contract procurement timeframe and support increased transparency in a way that does not add to the administrative burden. Our nonprofit workforce deserves better than that, than what the city currently provides. And we thank members of the communities for coming together to address this issue today. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pinkz. Our last panelist today will be Michael Antwerp. You may begin when the sergeants call time.
Starting time.
Mr. Antwerp, the, we will unmute you, and then you can begin your testimony. Michael Antwerp, I'll give you another few seconds, and then we'll call it. Mr. Antwerp, could you please unmute yourself? I'm going to turn it back to the chair for closing remarks.
Thank you so much to everybody who has attended and taken the time. Thank you to our staff for putting this hearing together. This meeting is now adjourned.